Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, October 26th, at 6:30 or so. Please stand for the invocation and also a moment of silence.
Let's pray. O gracious God and Father, we come before you presence this evening, Father, in prayer, to seek wisdom and guidance and direction, to pray for your protection, to say thank you for those who do serve and protect this community. Father, we pray for our families. We pray again for all that's said and done, that it will benefit this community to grow stronger. Oh, Father, we pray tonight especially for the men and women in this room, for the decisions they make that will guide this community. But we thank you, Lord, for your wisdom and your leadership, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Warre, would you lead us in the pledge tonight, please?
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Span.
Present.
Councilman Hardaway. Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Uzalak.
Present.
Councilman Pettit, I'm sorry, Pettitt.
Here.
Councilman White, absent. And Councilman Bella.
Present. I'd also like to introduce tonight Ricardo Hall. He's a partner with Kopka, Pinkus, and Dolan, sitting in for Joe Svetnov tonight. Thank you and welcome. Welcome. Moving on to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations, we have the letter from the town engineering administrator endorsing Core Construction's recommendation to approve payment for application number 24. Mr. King.
Yes, Mr. President. The town's professional staff and myself, we've reviewed the September 2021 billing for the work completed at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. We concur with Core Construction's recommendation in approving payment application number 22 for the vendors listed below, the total amount of $128,252.37.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Hardaway. Chair recognizes Mr. Span for the second to approve application number 24 for payment. Questions or comments on the motions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Also tonight, we have the consent agenda, which is the payable voucher for approval for October 26th and the town council meeting minutes of October 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettitt, second by Mrs. Uzalak for approval of the consent agenda. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the standing committees, we have the Budget and Finance, Councilman Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Later on in the meeting, we will be approving our ordinance and resolution for appropriations of our tax rates for 2022. That'll come under ordinances later in the meeting. And secondly, we're going to have an ARP meeting on Thursday, October 28th, at 3:00 p.m. here in the town hall. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettitt.
No report.
Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Minchuck.
Only thing I have at this point is, I don't know if it's just me, or does it seem like the leaves fall later and later every year?
Later and later every year.
So I'm sure any adjustments need to be made through our Parks Department will be done, so if not, I'll reach out to them. Other than that, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you.
Steve, see me after the meeting. I got a question for you.
Gotcha. Elections, Public Relations, Town Beautification, Councilman Pettitt.
Yes, Mr. President. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate Paula Weinberg for being elected Maryville Precinct Chairperson at a special caucus. I'm sure Paula's going to do an outstanding job for the Democratic Party. With regard to public relations, several items. As you guys all know, I'm a very proud volleyball parent. The Andrean 59ers are going to semi-state on Saturday. The girls soccer team is going to the state championship on Saturday. And I did not forget you, Mr. Minchuck, the number-one-ranked Maryville Pirates. Open sectional play Friday night against Crown Point. Lastly, on public relations, please do not forget to get Linda your names if you plan on attending the thankful Evening of Thanks Gala at the Avalon Manor on November 20th. The town has purchased three tables, and we will be giving out the Police Officer of the Year. Chief Cuttino, someone from the chamber should be reaching out to you for the Officer of the Year, and same with Chief Yurga, for you to submit the name for the Officer and Firefighter of the Year. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. Pettitt, I have to say, these girls have some clout, the volleyball team especially, because I was driving home today and I saw a billboard on Broadway congratulating them and a big picture of the entire team. So kudos to Lamar Advertising for putting the girls on there.
Yep. We did that when, last year, when Maryville went to semi-state, we did Maryville Holbert Valpo, part of the space available program that Lamar promotes in the communities.
Very nice. Thank you.
So when you beat Westphal in the semi-state, Jeff, we will get them on the board.
Go ahead and start designing it now.
Okay.
Now, that's confidence. Environmental Affairs, Mrs. Uzalak.
Yes, we had 29 COVID deaths last Friday over the week. And out of those 20, they were in northwestern area. Out of those 29, 15 of them were from Lake County. So they are giving out booster shots now, which I did get, and you could get them at any hospital here in Lake County or at Walgreens or CVS, any of those. And the Moderna and the Johnson shots, they're available at this time now, too, because they were not available in September. Only the Pfizer booster was available. So so far in Lake County, we have had 1,166 people that have passed from the COVID. So I hope everybody goes ahead and gets their virus shot because it's still out there. And oh, and flu shots are also out there now that you could get at any drugstore in the area or at your doctor's office. Okay?
Mr. President, to Mrs. Uzalak and maybe to Terrence, in the spring, we held, the Indiana State Health Department came into the Dean and Barbara White Community Center and had the three days, I think it was three days, of shots, vaccinations, first round, second round. My family got them there. I got mine at Methodist. Is there any indication, Terrence, have you been contacted by them about the boosters? And could we host a booster like they did? Or is there any, I don't know, Margie, if there's any indication of doing something like that again for the boosters?
We can check with them.
Yeah, we can check with them. But like I said, if they wanted to get it immediately, they could go into Walgreens, CVS, Methodist, and even your family got.
St. Mary's Medical.
Yeah, I got my booster three days ago, four days, oh, it was postponed. And last week, and there was no line whatsoever. You just walked in, walked out.
No, like I said, most of them are just Walgreens.
Yeah, that's the way the South Lake is.
Right.
You just walk right in off the street.
Yeah.
You don't even have to make an appointment.
Well, you got your booster, too, right?
Yeah, I got mine a couple of weeks ago.
Well, the ones who got Moderna and Johnson and Johnson shots, the boosters are available now for them, too.
Right, yeah. Yeah, starting at least today, because I know my daughter went and they asked her which one, and she said Pfizer. But they said, okay, make sure that it's not Moderna. So you have, I mean, they're good, and we just have to, you have to make sure that when they give them to you, because I just read something a couple of weeks ago that Walgreens was supposed to be giving somebody a flu shot, and they end up giving them a vaccine shot.
Saw that, yeah.
That's got to be a miserable thing, especially if you just had one within a few weeks, and then you end up getting that double dose. Probably not going to be pretty for you for a couple of days.
They fill out the form, the pharmacist gives it to you, and then you hand them that form.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I don't, don't ask me how it happened, Margie, but it happened.
But they are going to start giving shots to children from the ages of five to 12, I believe.
Right, that was on the.
I think it's been okayed in Indiana so far, because Illinois has already started with that. So it's good for the kids if they want to get the antibodies.
Thank you.
Oh, you are quite welcome.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
No report.
Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
We've been having several executive sessions lately, but I don't have anything publicly to report at this time.
Thank you. Economic Development, Mr. Pettitt.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge and welcome Angie Chilcott is with us tonight, our Economic Development Director. As I reported at the RDC, Angie and I, along with other staff members, Sheila and Steve and Matt, we have met with several projects, one on both sides of Mississippi, a couple in Ameriplex, and Angie and I had a Zoom call on a potential 20-acre out on Colorado. As I told the RDC members, and Margie, for your benefit, I'll probably be calling a redevelopment executive session when those projects come closer to fruition, and we want to honor the confidentiality of the developers. So I will schedule that RDC meeting when appropriate. That's all.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uzalak.
Oh, as far as the parks are concerned, they've all been rehabbed, like I had mentioned before. They are keeping up with the grass mowing. All the parks are in real good shape. The only thing I have coming up is maybe a new park director, but I would have to meet with Mr. Hardaway and our committee to see what's going on. I haven't heard any more on it. Mr. Hardaway, anything going on?
The only thing I can tell you right now, Mrs. Uzalak, is that we have put the search on hold for Park's Director, and just trying to get Terrence Price settled in in his position, and then we'll make a decision after he gets settled in.
Okay, very good. And that's all I have to report.
I've got one thing on the parks.
Mrs. Uzalak, can you pull your microphone facing you, please? Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay, what?
I've got one thing on the parks, I'm sorry. The MCD project looks like it has started at Steph Park, and I know we've had those arrangements we agreed to, I suppose, last year, I believe it was. And I know part of the agreement was to bring that green wall down, so we need to reach out to MCD and make sure that that's still happening. I know they started their rough stuff first. I don't know if that's still in the plans or not, but we need to make sure that that is going to come down. That was part of our agreement.
Oh, did you contact the MCD Director?
We will. I just want to make sure it's.
Okay, no, that'll be fine. Sure.
So the equipment you see over there in Steph Park, they're a block over, trying to think it's.
Yeah, I know exactly.
That's some water main work that's going on. They had an emergency, so that's why you see that equipment there.
Oh, I thought that was part of the project.
MCD hasn't started yet. They're getting ready to start soon.
I was excited.
I was going to say, I haven't heard anything.
I could be wrong, but I think the project goes out for bid November 1st.
November 1st, okay. All right.
That was the last.
Does the park equipment come down, Steve, while they're on that project?
No. Take my streamer.
The park equipment will stay up.
Yeah, no equipment will come down at all.
Good, because all the parks are being mowed.
Glad you didn't make cookies for it.
For winter. Okay, good.
And then I also heard, as long as we're on the MCD topic, I'm sorry to, that the sophomore park project that they were working on just got approved, so I know it's going to take a lot longer to get everything together.
Yeah.
That's good news for the people of sophomore park.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
So you're saying you're getting a new park in there?
No, no.
What are you talking about?
I apologize.
Sophomore Park, what?
It's called sophomore park.
That's what it's called, sophomore park.
That's the neighborhood.
That's the neighborhood.
I know that, but what are you talking about?
As long as we were on the MCD, I'm sorry.
We were talking about parks, so.
As long as we were on the MCD topic, they've been looking at sophomore park for a while for putting lines in there for the residents.
Okay, you're talking about water lines, sewer lines?
Sewer lines, correct.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I apologize.
You know, I'm being patient. Everyone's back on the dais. We're one big happy family tonight again.
We're trying to adjust to that. You know, Jeff was used to being on this side by himself.
That's okay, Jeff, keep talking.
Mrs. Uzalak, does that conclude your report on parks?
Oh, yes, it does, Mr. President. Thank you.
Abandoned and blighted properties, Councilman Hardaway.
We had a meeting Thursday, Friday, and one of the things that we said, the town looks pretty good from a blighted standpoint. And one of the things that, you know, we've got code enforcement out on weekends, and so their duties have been expanded a little bit to where, when they see people working even on weekends now, if they don't see a permit in the window, then they stop and put a stop work order on them to, and then turn it into building and planning on Monday, and then Dan Brown goes out there and, you know, finishes shutting them down. But I think that it's going to be well worth it for us, because, you know, we got too much stuff. You know, I got a call today about another island repair place going on over on Johnson Street. So we just need to stay on top of that. And I appreciate code enforcement for all that you do, and you and Tiffany and Kelly, the new guy that we got in there. So you guys just keep doing what you're doing, and we're going to be okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you. Dean and Barbara White Community Center, co-chairs Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Pettitt.
Mr. Minchuck.
After you, sir.
All I have is, Terrence called me up, and we have scheduled a meeting for immediately after this. He has a couple of issues, schedule-wise, to go through with us, and we were talking during the RDC meeting, Jeff, that we probably, there are some other issues out there before we do the punch list that we need to take care of. So Jeff and I will schedule a separate committee meeting, Terrence, to go through the physical stuff, the press box, the heater, the speaker, some of the other things that Steve and Rich and other people have noticed. So we'll do that, Jeff, we'll get together. Sheila's indicated we have a Plan Commission workshop on November 2nd, so if you want to do it Tuesday night before that, we could always do it like at 5:00. And it's up to you if you want to just do that. I'll let Linda know once you and I can talk. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. Minchuck, anything to add?
No, sir.
Special Projects, Mr. Hardaway.
Well, we continue to, continuing to get to the 50th birthday celebration on December 11th. We are looking for ideas. We've got some great things planned thus far, and so we just want to make sure that if anybody on the council has any input that they would like at this time, please let us know. Our next meeting is November 4th at 2:00 at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center.
We received an email from Pat and Linda about the Lake County Council.
Oh, yeah.
Acknowledging us a resolution.
Rick and I will attend that on November 4th.
Okay, you guys, we got it covered, okay?
Right, yeah, we got that covered.
But I would like to add, anyone else is welcome, either the committee, Rich, or any other.
Anybody, the more to marry you.
Yeah, so that's November 9th at their 10:00 meeting at Room A301. So anyone's welcome to go if they want.
You'll be working, you can just take a break.
I'm off.
Whoa, man, so you.
It's a rare occasion.
I'm excited.
It's a rare occasion.
Is that it, Mr.?
That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Moving on then to Department and Commission reports. I don't see Mr. White as present tonight. We'll skip on that. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
Our next meeting is in November.
Okay. Matt Lake is out of town at a conference. He did send me a text and say he wouldn't be here tonight. Knowing Matt Lake, he's probably giving, given the conference, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I talked to him yesterday.
Representing Maryville well, so. Also, the CVA will pass on that. Department reports. Mr. King, you're staring me down.
I get to go first. I'm going to make it brief. The work on 57th Avenue continues. We probably got about a couple more weeks on that to get everything buttoned up. The town paving continues, probably have that wrapped up by the end of November for this season. Looks like we're going to get all the streets done on the list that we have, the original list, so we'll be okay with that. Mississippi Street, we did have some NIPS go delays that should be resolved end of this week, and dire construction. We'll be getting back on that with the opening of that road at the end of November. This coming weekend, Saturday and Sunday, we will be, the town hall front parking lot's going to be closed. It's going to be seal-coated and striped this weekend, as well as a couple other striping issues here in the back. But they're going to, they're going to phase it in a way where we can still get in and out, and it'll be pretty much closed for this weekend. Town employees can, will be able to, you know, pull back in there Monday morning freely and park wherever they want, and that work should be done. And that's all I have.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
This temperature is not going to affect the paving?
No, you're good, you're good to 40 degrees for asphalt, is a typical, you know, 40 degrees and rising. So if it's, if we get up in the morning and it's in the 30s, we'll hold, we hold the contractors off until we reach a certain temperature before we can pave. And it's all quality-controlled. All the asphals are all quality-controlled, so.
I asked the same question, Rich, and Steve assures me we have a one-year maintenance bond.
Well, here's my reason for asking that question, because I know another municipality that kind of like paved in late in November, and they wasted their money, because then they had to go back to next year and repave.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, you have to be careful. You do. If it gets too cold, we'll stop.
That's what happened on the first, on the phase of Mississippi from 73rd to the bridge, Rich. They paved it too late, and we ended up cutting. When you and I first got into office, they had to cut and patch that.
Well, I just, I'd just like to keep it out there.
Yeah.
When that happens, you know, I don't want nobody saying that we didn't know.
Yeah, right, yep.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay.
Ms. Sheila.
I do have two things. First of all, I want to thank the code enforcement also. Today was a busy day with stopping people that didn't have permits, so we want to ask our residents to please pull permits for work that's being done in their home. And also, Mr. Brown has indicated that if he gets a telephone call on the weekend about someone out there, he's willing to come out and assist the code enforcement officers on the weekend.
Thank you.
So, and also, we had to vacate easement out in Heritage North. So the only thing that needs to be done to vacate an easement is that the council needs to sign off on it, so I'll just pass this around. Thank you.
That might need some type of action, or is it just a signature we need?
I would turn, Mr. President, I would turn to Ricardo. Vacation of a right-of-way is a council action. Is an easement a Plan Commission action by statute?
I would have to get back to you.
Who took the action, Sheila?
So it's been going back and forth with Robinson Engineers, Steve and myself and Teringa. And it was, they came up with the final thing, that the only thing that needed, the utilities had already signed off on it, and the only thing it needed was the signature of the council.
So what utilities are we, what are we vacating?
So what had happened was out there in Heritage North, I believe it's between lots 51 and 52, the, the two properties got platted wrong and recorded wrong. So in order to make it right, the easements have to be vacated between the two lots. The easements have to be vacated by everybody so they can be replatted and re-recorded. That's all we're doing.
Steve, did we not discuss that at the Plan Commission meeting about the two lots?
Not these two.
I don't think so.
Oh, because something came up about two lots that had to be replatted. That's why I thought it was.
That might have been Web Hyundai, I don't think. That wasn't, that wasn't, this is residential, Margie, that wasn't.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, you can certainly pass it for signatures. I feel good with the motion, and just, let's just vote on it, then we could all sign it and, yeah, good to go. If other actions needed, we'll do it appropriately.
All right, I'll make a motion that we vacate the easement in Heritage North as designated on the plat.
Second.
Motion on the floor, proper second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Ms. Shine, pass that around and we'll sign it for you. Anything else, Sheila?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Terrence, how are you tonight?
I'm doing great, sir. About yourself?
Good.
Actively working, like Councilman mentioned before, we'll meet afterwards to discuss some different things, because we're actively working to get our program and the things going, so we can start generating some, not only income, but connecting with our community. Some of the programs that we've discussed that we're working on, excited to present for the residents of Maryville, youth basketball, flag football, summer and fall of 2022, summer Leadership Academy, summer camp, homeschool enrichment program, special events, day trips, youth volleyball, adult volleyball, fall of 2022. So we're excited to get those things up and going, and to learn about our systems and what will resonate with the citizens of Maryville.
Great. Terrence, at the next committee meeting for the Dean and Barbara White, can you bring up the website again in your conversation with NOAA at Zondor Creative, and let's maybe reignite that and get going?
Yeah, we were talking about that today, so.
Oh, good.
We're ready.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, good evening. Just two things. We just finished interviewing, and sometime next month, we should have a couple of officers coming before this body to get sworn in. And second, Halloween is this weekend, and we will have officers out there for the trick-or-treaters. That's all I have.
Super, great. Vicki, anything to report?
As everyone has said, we are working on the permits. I found one today, where they're just out there roofing away with no permit. So we put a stop work order on that. We're still working on the vehicles that are either expired or not plated, even in driveways, trying to get everybody to get their junk out so that they have someplace to put their cars when it snows, that, you know, their driveway isn't already full of things that they're not even driving. We are getting some complaints still. We had 18 calls in Councilwoman Uzalak's ward within the past month, and we got those all taken care of, so.
Yeah, thank you, Vicki.
You're welcome. That's it.
Vicki, would you mind getting with Linda for the next town newsletter? Can we put a section in there about permits are required to do work even on your own home? I think the residents just don't know about it, and so they go to the local hardware store and buy what they need and jump on a roof and start doing work. I think we need to educate, so that might help.
Sure. Unfortunately, the one that I found today, they were well aware of what they were supposed to do.
Well, there's going to be that, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to general orders, we have no first reading ordinances, but we do have ordinance 2125 on second and final reading. It's an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the year ending 2022. Trista is going to help us out here at the podium.
Good evening, everyone. You have before you then ordinance 2125, which is, as you know, continued for discussion on the 2022 budget for the town of Maryville, continued from last meeting of October 12th. You will see on your copies some handwritten notations which reflect the continued work that the Budget and Finance Committee did between the last meeting and this meeting to make some additional reductions to the budget. Most significantly is the general fund. It was advertised at over $12 million and is now just barely over $10 million, much more in line with the expected incoming tax levying miscellaneous revenues. It's almost balanced, not quite, but it's much closer than it was and than it has been last year, so that's good news. Hopefully, the continued pattern of underspending by the departments will allow you to come out even in the general fund in 2022. The second page of that ordinance 2125 include the, uh, non-reverting funds. There are a few reduced based on the expected cash balances that will be in play in 2022. There are a few others that are reduced based on a further review that the committee did of expected expenditures in comparison to the revenues, and they felt that those were appropriate as well.
Trista with the, Mr. President, if I may?
Sure.
Uh, Trista, with the adjustment in the general fund down to $10,200,000, is that 200? Or 280?
280, sorry, yeah.
280. The bottom line, um, on the adopted budget is $24,97,200, is that adjusted for that reduction?
No.
Or should that?
The original printing on your paper, um, is the original number. I should have handwritten the adjustment.
So we just take off the 2 million off the 24?
It will, yes.
Or whatever, okay.
Yes. And so I'll do that before you sign the copy this evening. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
When does this have to be signed?
We'll sign it tonight. I have the original copy here.
Okay.
It then gets entered into Gateway with the adjustments, uh, that you vote on this evening, and that is due by Friday. Uh, Ms. Santos in the clerk's office is aware of that and she and I will coordinate and proofread each other and, uh, get the final figures situated and entered. This signed copy of the ordinance gets uploaded into Gateway as well, uh, which is why these handwritten notations are important for today.
Very good. Madam Clerk, Treasurer?
I've got a couple of questions, Trista. I just wanted to find out, um, I noticed that the adopted budget for the court probation has, is now gonna be zero as well as for the public defender fees. Um, will that make us still in line with the judge parent's order?
Yes, based on discussions and agreements that were had earlier this afternoon between the parties, uh, I absolutely believe that it does, as do the attorneys. Um, the reason that those two funds are shown as zero is because the cash balance in one of them is gone already and it's in the negative. The fund is in the negative. Uh, the second one is close. It is still positive, but it's close. And so, um, for council to adopt a budget, for non-reverting funds, council does sometimes adopt a budget higher than what the current cash balance is when you expect revenues to come in the following year. That's not the case for these two funds. And so the prudent decision would be to list them as zero. And if funds are received into those funds by cha, if monies are received, revenues are received into those funds by chance in 2022, certainly an additional appropriation can be had for that money to be used.
Mr. Hardaway, do you have a motion for us?
Motion to approve the, uh, 2022 budget, Mr. President, at this time.
Second.
So for the record, to be specific, this is ordinance 21-25.
Ordinance 21-25.
Thank you, Mr. Hardaway.
No problem.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? This is a second reading ordinance. It's open up for the public comment. Is there any public comment tonight on ordinance 21-25? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
One thing before we vote.
Mr. Hardaway.
President, I'd just like to thank, uh, Trista for all of the work that she's done in preparing this year's budget. It was a labor of love because we had meeting after meeting after meeting in order to get to this point. So I just wanted to publicly thank her for all of the time that she devoted to, uh, helping us get through this process.
Ditto.
Yeah, job well done, Trista.
Thank you.
Have we ever been this close to being, uh, starting out with a balanced budget?
Not in a little while.
Been a while, okay.
It's a, a great start. Hopefully next year we'll be having an even better conversation and that will propel you then in the future to have some extra funds to be able to spend on things that, that are on those wish lists, so.
Great, thank you. Roll call, please.
Certainly, Mr. Spam.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes.
Mrs. Uszleks.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
And Mr. Bella.
Yes.
All six in favor?
Six, zero, motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 21-26. This is an ordinance authorizing additional appropriations in a recycling grant fund, motor vehicle highway restricted and general funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval of ordinance 21-26 on second and final reading. Anything to add, Trista, to this particular ordinance?
Um, not for discussion purposes, although I see how in the world. I see a typographical error, a Scribner's error on the total line for the motor vehicle highway fund. And so I would just ask to amend and fix that here today. It can be done by hand notation.
Sure. What, what should it read?
Uh, it should read, and I'm going to trust my calculator instead of my visual math, if I might have just a moment. The total, please, for the motor vehicle highway restricted fund should read $415,108.12. I apologize, I didn't catch my multiple proofreads.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you get the?
Is that instead of the 76.6 or 78.6?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh.
That's a big, uh, change.
Yeah.
Well, there was an original, um, request by Public Works that did total the 78,000. And then, um, of their own evaluation. And as we met then to try to get them more toward balancing the 50/50 split for motor vehicle, um, the larger amount came into play, which are the, the specific items you see here. And I obviously forgot to change the total.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hardaway, does your motion stand with the?
Yes, I, I can amend my motion to the $415,108.12.
Mr. Pettit, is your second stand? Anything else to add, Trista?
No, thank you.
Madam Clerk, Treasurer, anything else to add?
Um, nope.
Again, this is a second reading ordinance. We'll open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on 21-26? Is there any public comment on ordinance 21-26? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Spam.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes.
Mrs. Uszleks.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
And President Bella.
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 21-27 on second and final reading. This is a, um, transfer of funds. Oh, this is the ARP.
Yeah, I definitely say this is, this is ARP money, Mr. President.
Right, just $3.9 million that we're going to be dispersing.
Motion to approve ordinance 21-27.
Pick one.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval of ordinance 21-27 on second reading.
Thank you.
This is the American Rescue Plan.
Yes, 3.9 million, correct.
Are there any other comments? Hearing none, any public comment on this ordinance, 21-27 on second reading? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Spam.
Aye.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes.
Mrs. Uszleks.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Uh, please remember we're going to be signing the, uh, the, the ordinance tonight.
Right.
So don't sneak out later.
If you got that, you can bring that to us and we can start signing, Trista.
Moving on to resolutions tonight, resolution 21-68. This is a transfer of funds, $14,000 decrease, $14,000 increase, uh, net effect is zero.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pettit with a strong second by Mrs. Uszleks.
Thank you.
Is there any questions or comments on this transfer of funds? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolution 21-69, again, a transfer of funds, uh, general and town administration decrease of 10,000. Um, overtime, general overtime increase of 10,000, net effect is zero.
Motion to, second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Minchuck for approval of this resolution, 21-69. This is complete now. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? I'm pausing so we can get some signatures here. Kind of important to get these done this evening.
You're 69.
Yeah, that's all we got, 69.
Ms. Shine, are there any BZA actions or large gathering actions for this evening?
No, sir, Mr. President.
Thank you. Old business, is there any old business before us tonight?
Is there a 21-70 or not?
I'm sorry, no, there's no, no.
Okay, just curious.
There isn't. But way to catch it, that's good.
Well, yeah, we talked.
We follow along.
That's good. Yeah, no, that was pulled, guys, sorry. This is complete too, Kelly. Any other old business? Is there new business before us? We have the approval of the, uh, ARP form, Mr. Hardaway?
Mr. President, I'll turn it over to the Clerk Treasurer because these are her forms that she has, uh, devised for the council payable voucher.
They're pretty.
Well, thank you. So we decided to use, uh, the pink form for the, uh, council payable voucher for, specifically for the ARP Fiscal Recovery Plan. So we can keep it separate. We are also going to, we are trying to figure out how to do a separate claims list for you guys to keep that separate so that all of our accounting, um, lines up for state border accounts because these are federal dollars and we want to make sure everything is done decently and in order and legally. Um, so we worked with Trista and Matt and, um, a couple of ladies in my office and came up with this. It has everything that's needed to check off, um, the different categories that you have to be within in the American Rescue, uh, plan for the authorization. The department head needs to sign it as well as, uh, the committee chairperson will, um, come in and sign. And that's Mr. Hardaway will come in once a week and, and make sure that what's being requested has already been approved by the committee. And then he, once he signs off on it, then I would then sign off on it and we'll process it. Um, we are hoping to eventually have this all loaded up, as, as you know, in the computer so that they can do all this electronically, but until that time, these are their forms. We also changed the, um, council payable voucher form that we were already using and just made it a little bit streamlineded so it looked like this one and made it a little bit more efficient with the appropriation balances and the fund balances to be filled out so they know as they're going.
Do we need a motion? If so, motion to approve.
Mr. President?
Trista?
You'll see at the top right corner that it is town form number 39.1 revised for 2021. Uh, with that additional notation, uh, Attorney Svenoff has approved this process today that it doesn't need an actual resolution, just simply a council approval.
Mr. Hardaway, would your motion include the form numbers, please, so that this is very specific?
Form number 39.1 revised 2021 and town form number 39.
Second stands.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Any discussion on a motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Forms are approved. Why do you keep passing this back to me? I don't know, one I sign. Any other, uh, new business before us tonight? Seeing none, open to the public for public comment. Any public comment tonight? Gene, Glasgow, no public comments? Not today, okay, good. That's actually a good thing, right? Announcements, our next town council meeting is November 9th at 6:30 in this very room.
And we have a Dean and Barbara White Community Center committee meeting, uh, next door in the conference room after this, Mr. President.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Pettit.
And we have a Plan Commission workshop Tuesday, the 2nd.
And a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting tomorrow at 6:30.
So everybody make sure you sign the documents before you leave the dais and please check off how you voted on these motions. There's a place to do that.
On the budget, there's a specific box to check whether you voted yes.
It should all be ayes, that's how we voted this evening. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Good business, guys.